Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for February 27th, 2023. If you would please stand as you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Rachel Hulteen.
Present.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your package, you have the meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2023, City Council meeting. Are there any corrections to be noted in the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There are corrections which Counselor Hoppe and I have discussed, and we will make those, fix those typos in the next area.
Okay. You have several typos. Any other notations? Okay, we will let the minutes approved as corrected. Any changes to be noted in the agenda? Agenda...oh, Counselor Hoppe.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. The recognition of the Wheat Ridge High School STEM team will not be happening this evening. The majority of those students are in musical production, which opens this weekend, and so they could not make it tonight.
Thank you very much. We will look forward to having them at another time when it's more convenient for them to be here. We do have a one proclamation. I'm going to go to the podium. And I would like to invite Ally Scheck, our Deputy City Manager, to come forward, and Lauren Mikulak, our Director of Community Development, and Maria DeAndrea, our Director of Public Works. If you all would please join me at the podium. Hi. How are you all tonight? Terrific. Well, thanks for being here. I'm proud to do a proclamation in support of Women's History Month and International Women's Day, March 2023. Whereas Women's History Month is declared annually as a month that highlights the contributions of women throughout history and in contemporary society, and March 8th has been recognized across the world as International Women's Day since 1911. And whereas, in March 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring Women's History Week to align with International Women's Day to commemorate the accomplishments, perspectives, and experiences of women in the United States. And whereas, in November 1893, a Colorado referendum passed women's suffrage into law, making Colorado the first state in the United States to give women the right to vote. And whereas, in 1920, the suffrage movement had finally gained enough support, and Congress, grateful for women's help during the First World War, passed the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which prohibits the states and the federal government from denying the right to vote to citizens of the United States on the basis of sex. And whereas, while the right to vote is a common topic for study when examining women's history, there are many more issues, perspectives, and accomplishments that require investigation across history, literature, science, politics, and the arts to more fully appreciate and understand the significant contributions of women throughout history. And whereas, women are residents, business owners, employees, elected officials, volunteers, caregivers, and members of city staff, and make a difference every day in the city of Wheat Ridge, and are to be celebrated for their contributions. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, formally celebrate the month of March 2023 as Women's History Month and the date March 8th, 2023, as International Women's Day in Wheat Ridge, Colorado, signed this 27th day of February, 2023. I have a little proclamation for the three of you to share. And would you like to say a few words at the podium?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ally, Maria, and I are honored to be accepting this proclamation for Women's History Month and International Women's Day. More importantly, we're thrilled to be a part of an organization and part of a community that values the contributions of women. We know this isn't the case in every organization nor in every community.
And we are so proud that this organization is comprised of 44% female employees, 33% of supervisors in this organization are women, and our executive management team is actually made up of 66% females. In Wheat Ridge, women can do anything.
Right. Just look at this council. And of course, none of this is possible without the men and women who came before us, who developed a community and a culture where it's a given that women are equal partners in business and in life. So today, we give thanks to city founder Louise Turner, our first city clerk, former mayors Gretchen Servany and Joyce J., former clerks Elise Brahm, Wanda Singh, Pam Anderson, and Janelle Shaver, former treasurer Mary Jo. Cavarra, and the 25 women who have served on council since the city's founding in 1969. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Where's our photographer right here?
Should we come up here?
Okay, why don't we go in the front? Yeah, come on in the front. We will go now to our public's right to speak. Members of the public may come and speak on any matter, not on the agenda, for a maximum of three minutes, under public's right to speak. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and give us your first name, last name, and your address, and if you'd spell your last name, and then the clerk will put on the timing buttons, and you'll have three minutes. And when it sort of starts to flash and turns yellow, wrap them up, and when it turns red, the time is expired. I have no one else, no one here to speak that signed up to speak, but if you are here and haven't signed up, you may come to the podium now and be recognized. If you are online, please raise your hand in the format. We'll bring you into the meeting, and we don't have anybody there. So we will go to our first order of business. That is agenda item number one. And Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 062023, an ordinance amending section 26-803.G of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to adopt the flood hazard delineation maps for Clear Creek dated September 2nd, 2022, as a local flood hazard area. At issue, the Colorado Water Conservation Board has designated the updated flood hazard delineation map for Clear Creek as a state flood plain map. The city needs to adopt the updated flood hazard delineation map as a local flood hazard area so that the best available flood maps can be used to regulate the flood plains along Clear Creek.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 062023, an ordinance amending section 26-803.G of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to adopt the flood hazard delineation maps for Clear Creek dated September 2nd, 2022, as a local flood hazard area. Order it published, public hearing set for March 13th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, 7500 West 29th Avenue, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilperson Hoppe. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number two. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 042023, an ordinance amending section 26-115.E of the Weaver's Code of Law is considering request for interpretation of the Board of Adjustment at issue. The proposed ordinance establishes a deadline by which an applicant may appeal an administrative code interpretation of the Board of Adjustment. No such deadline currently exists in the code, and the lack of a deadline is inconsistent with the best practice and inconsistent with other co-provisions which clearly establish a timeframe for appeal.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Councilmember Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 042023, an ordinance amending section 26-115.E of the Weaver's Code of Law is considering request for the interpretation by the Board of Adjustment on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, March 13th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number three. Counselor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 05-2023, an ordinance amending sections 22-58 and 22-67 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to establish an exemption from the city sales tax and use tax for certain retail delivery fees enacted by the state of Colorado. At issue, Colorado Senate Bill 21-260 created a Clean Fleet Enterprise to impose a Clean Fleet Retail Delivery Fee, CFRDF, to be paid by the purchaser of tangible personal property delivered to the purchaser by a motor vehicle. The fee is 27 cents per delivery. Delivery fees are currently subject to city sales tax. As a home rule city, Wheat Ridge is able to establish its own laws, including the ability to exempt from taxation certain goods and services. The attached ordinance exempts the CFRDF from taxation.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Counselor Hutchinson, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 05-2023, an ordinance amending sections 22-58 and 22-67 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to establish an exemption from the city sales and use tax for certain retail delivery fees enacted by the state of Colorado on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, March 13th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number four. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the purchase of tandem equipment outfit from Holman Upfitting Truck Services of Colorado Springs, Colorado, in a total amount not to exceed $175,514. At issue, the Public Works Department is proposing the purchase of various snow and ice control equipment, lighting, hydraulics, and options to be installed on the new tandem cab and chassis approved by the city council in January 2023. The total expense of the various equipment, lighting, hydraulics, and options is estimated to be $175,514, based on a quote provided by Holman Upfitting Truck Services.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council, not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't, but we're here for questions.
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, I will open it up to the public to speak on this item. If you would like to speak, you may do so now. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but you may come to the podium if you wish to speak. Or raise your hand online. I don't see anybody coming forward, so we will go to questions from council. Any questions from council or staff? Before I close, this is not a hearing, before we go to a motion. Seeing none, Mayor Protim Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the purchase of tandem equipment outfit from Holman Upfitting Truck Services of Colorado Springs, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed $175,514.
Second.
We have a motion and a...who had the second over here? Counselor Hutchinson had the second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thanks you so much. We will go to agenda item number five. Counselor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Resolution Number 07-2023, a resolution authorizing a building lease between the city of Wheat Ridge and Wheat Ridge 2020, Inc., also known as Local Works, for 9110 West 44th Avenue. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge owns a building within the Anderson Park complex, known as the Parks Forestry and Open Space Building, located at 9110 West 44th Avenue. The city wishes to lease the building to Local Works for the operation of a membership-based community organization designed to provide the tools necessary to promote innovation and creative exercise, also known as a makerspace.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, thank you. And we do have a guest from Local Works here this evening, who will have a brief presentation. But I'd like to start it out first. The city has a very unique opportunity here to partner with Local Works on a community project that I know you're all familiar with. Project that will create a collaborative space for small business incubation, entrepreneurship, and community creativity. The Parks Forestry and Open Space Building is in Anderson Park, just off of 44th Avenue. It's currently inadequate for employee offices and most other city functions, but will provide an excellent space for Local Works to set up a community makerspace. The proposed lease in front of you tonight allows Local Works to utilize this building for initial term of five years with options to renew. The Local Works will pay $1 a year in rent. That will be the city's in-kind contribution to this project, and the city will be responsible for the maintenance, repair, and replace...or I'm sorry, Local Works will be responsible for the maintenance, repair, and replacement of all furnishings, fixtures, and equipment within the building. And as a landlord, the city will be responsible for all structural repair and maintenance. Paige Piper is here this evening, Executive Director of Local Works, and she has a brief presentation about what this project's all about.
Welcome, Director Piper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here. First and foremost, I want to thank many of my board members who are here tonight in support of this project, as well as my incredible team that makes all of our work possible every day. And I do want to also thank Patrick and his team. They've been incredible in this process and collaborative as we got to this place of the lease. And first and foremost, this is a really exciting monumental moment for us. The makerspace really started in 2020, when we got an in-kind donation of some amazing tools from an amazing community member, thinking that we could do something good with them. So this is the start to doing that good. Sorry. There we go. So just to get everyone back up to speed, and I know that y'all are probably sick of hearing from me at this point when I ask for you to meet with me about what Local Works is up to in the makerspace, but just to recap what the makerspace is, and Patrick did a great job of introducing it. It really is an incubation center for entrepreneurship, creativity, and those that are just looking for a space to be creative. In 2020, there was an art feasibility study done in partnership with Local Works in the city of Wheat Ridge, where we really found that creativity is teeming in Wheat Ridge. We have this huge population of people that's really interested in learning how they can be more creative, how they can use their creative skills to start a business, and moreover, how they can affect the community in a positive way through creativity. And so what this makerspace will be is a place for all of those folks to come. There's been many, many case studies done on makerspaces, and the closest neighboring makerspace that we will be better than, I think, in my very unbiased opinion, is Tinker Mill. And Tinker Mill is located in Longmont, and since their inception in 2013 through 2018, when they had their makerspace up and running, they had their membership structure. Within five years of that, they saw over 50 businesses be created, 50 businesses. And in those five years as well, 10 of those businesses actually moved out of the makerspace into the city of Longmont to a brick and mortar shop. So that's our goal here, is that we're creating new businesses in Wheat Ridge. We're allowing people from the entire Jefferson County area to come use this space. We really think that this is going to be a destination for folks, because the closest one to the technology that we will have inside of it is in Longmont. So we really think that this is going to be a destination. The location is perfect. When we think about getting off of I-70, driving onto 44th Avenue, people can come to the makerspace. They can go down and grab a beer at New Image Brewing. They can go over to Beatrice Pizza for dinner. These are the things that we think are going to become of the makerspace, not only of new businesses, but also for economic development in our city. So we've gone over a little bit of this, but like I mentioned, we had that large tool donation in 2020, which is how this concept first came into play. And last year, in 2022, we actually received over $35,000 in in-kind contributions, continuing for the tools and equipment to be put inside of our makerspace. The support we've received is astounding. We have over 100 volunteers activated, ready to go. We have people that are extremely interested in becoming members on day one of the makerspace. And if y'all remember last year during Ridge Fest, we partnered with a national brand called Maker Fair to bring a Maker Fair to Wheat Ridge. And so what a Maker Fair is, if you didn't have a chance to walk through it at Ridge Fest, is you walk through and you see people demonstrating on what they make, they're selling their product, and it's that piece of collaboration and creativity and innovation incubation that happens inside of a Maker Fair. With our exciting reveal at the first of the year of the name of our makerspace, Clear Creek Makerspace, as we run right along the creek, and it's a staple in the Wheat Ridge community, as we think the makerspace will be, we are taking the opportunity to now brand our own fair for makers, both in the Wheat Ridge community but the surrounding Jefferson County community, to join us at Ridge Fest this year, and it'll be called Makers on the Ridge. So this will be the newest addition to Ridge Fest that will continue for years to come due to this program. And then finally, we've received some really great and exciting evolution, I guess I will say, in partnerships and who we're partnering with for the makerspace. So Colorado School of Mines is extremely interested in this, and they've already offered to lend us professors to come teach classes, like 3D Printing 101. We've talked to Red Rocks Community College, and their new Dean of Workforce Services, he is incredible, and he's actually putting his students through a simulation this upcoming year of how to open a coffee shop. There's an abandoned coffee shop on the Red Rocks Community College campus, and so they're going to put the students through actually opening the coffee shop, and they would like to partner with the makerspace to show how you can use a makerspace to open a business. So they'll come in and actually create branded materials themselves for their business to get them off the ground. So our makerspace strategic plan, investment, one, this building will be a huge investment for us. This building is a dream come true, truly, and on the next slide, you'll see all the amazing plans that we have for it. And we're also really aggressively going after grants. So as you know, Local Works' commitment to the city of Wheat Ridge, as we diversify our funds, is understanding how we become more self-sustaining, and so we're going after quite a bit of grants to make sure that that happens here. We'll also be holding classes for the public. So we'll have classes where there'll be a fee that's discounted for those that are members, but anyone is welcome in the community to come to these classes. There'll be classes specifically geared towards business owners. There'll be classes specifically geared towards those that call themselves makers or creatives. The membership structure I mentioned, that's going to be a really great revenue generating source for Local Works as we continue to diversify our funds. And then growth, we really see that, I think, that we can emulate what happened in Longmont when it comes to the business community and grow businesses here and support them in a new way. So the fun stuff. So this is our floor plan for the makerspace. This might change slightly, but my amazing team member, our Program and Development Officer, Jake Harrington, he has done some incredible work to really think about how we lay out the space to best serve the community, and what we've heard from the community already of what they'd like to see here. So you'll see that we'll have a woodworking shop. We'll have a flexible class area where people can come use that as a general shop. We will have a metalworking area. You'll also see that we'll have a lab of 3D printers, like how cool to have a lab of 3D printers in Wheat Ridge for people to come use. We'll have an electronics section, a textile section. We're also going to dabble in the coworking space. We know that there's an appetite for this. We know that there's a ton of remote workers in Wheat Ridge that could come use this space for coworking. This could also be a place for people to come do a strategic plan for their small business when you need to get out of your office, things like that. And then finally, there'll be a lounge area. So we found in a lot of studies for makerspaces that having a lounge area actually continues to spark creativity, as people continue to have their conversations about what they're making and why, which is why we've put that in here. So that is my brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just want to thank you so much for all the support you've given Local Works over the years and for considering this really incredible opportunity.
Thank you, Paige. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open it to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. Please come to the podium and give us your first name, last name, and an address. We'll go from there.
Hi, everybody. I'm Stephanie Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. I live at 6465 West 38th Avenue, the Marla Manor Apartments. Say hello as you go by. And I'm a board member at Local Works. In my previous life, before I moved back to Colorado, where I was born, moved to Wheat Ridge about five and a half years ago, I was an art history professor. I have a PhD in modern and contemporary art history. And what I wanted to add on to Paige's excellent conversation here is how important the concept of a makerspace is in arts communities and in high arts communities and in classrooms. The idea that you could be an old lady like me, who likes to sew, who likes to knit, you could go hang out and be doing that, and maybe a young kid who knows something could go hang out and be doing that, and maybe a young kid who knows something about coding comes in and says, how can I mix what you do with what I do, and maybe teaches me a little bit about coding? Where we have these intergenerational, inter-material, intermedia conversations going on, I just can't imagine how exciting this is going to be for Wheat Ridge. It's something that we wanted to do at our university but didn't have the funds, didn't really have the backing for it. Putting this here is really going to put Wheat Ridge at the cutting edge. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward, may do so now to speak on this item, or if you are online, raise your hand, we'll bring you into our meeting. And I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll opening up the questions from council. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious. I noticed that the city is going to pay 40 grand for modifications to the building, but what's the ongoing annual cost to maintain? I mean, I assume we're going to be paying heat and air and all those things. What does it cost to run this building? Because I know a little bit of history about this building, and I know it's needing some love.
Needs a little TLC. Great question, and I may have Maria respond to that, but first of all, I want to thank Maria and our new facilities manager, Dan Briers, who have worked very closely with local works on this to make it work. But there's been a few updates on the 40,000. Thankfully, we're not going to need as much, but I'll let Maria speak to that.
Yes. So we wanted to turn over the building essentially to local works in a good condition. So we committed to bringing it up to code essentially, so anything ADA-related, anything with the HVAC, and we're fixing that probably at a price around 20,000 or so. So that's, the number of 40 has come down a little bit. But then our intent going forward is that they would care, they would, local works would take care of the day-to-day costs, so any of the utilities, the janitorial, anything like that. But we would continue to maintain the building. Let's say if one of the HVAC units on the roof went out, we would be responsible for that. So thinking about the shell of the building and any of the components that go into making that a good space, as well as the snow plowing and kind of the exterior maintenance.
But it will not be maintained as a city building with our janitorial staff, or they will be doing all of that?
That's correct. So, yes, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question for Paige. Councilor Nosler Beck and I were over at Wheat Ridge High School a couple weeks ago, and with their new remodel, I think they're putting in a little bit of a makerspace or something in their library. Are you guys planning to do any partnerships or anything like that with them?
We've spoken very briefly, but yes. And Jeffco Public Schools is an overarching partnership that I failed to mention, so thank you, Councilor Stites, for bringing that up. We've talked to Jeffco Public Schools about partnering on a much broader level, not just with Wheat Ridge Schools, but the entire Jefferson County school system, and also helping teachers. So there'll be at least one week, if not two, in the summer that we allow teachers to come to the makerspace for free to help get their classrooms ready for the school year.
That's great. Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions or comments from staff? Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there are no administrators or any offices currently at this location?
Correct.
So they've all moved to the building on Wadsworth?
Correct, or the public workshops area.
Okay, so this is vacant currently?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck.
Really appreciate the whole concept, and it's really exciting that this has come into Anderson Park in District Four. I just think it's such an exciting addition to the whole corridor, and I love the thoughts about incorporating the existing businesses that are there. Do we know how much a membership would cost?
That's a great question. So there'll be monthly structures, there'll be annual structures, there'll be discounted group membership fees, but on average, you can anticipate that a membership per month is close to $70.
Okay. And then, and I would assume that there would be like basic utilities, like Wi-Fi and stuff included in that, so it's like a working space?
Correct.
And then I really appreciate that we're thinking about how to attract more people to Wheat Ridge and to that area, but, you know, I also, just when we're considering membership and things, I think it would be incredible if we could, I don't know if it's a discount or extra perks for businesses in Wheat Ridge that want to work with local works or for residents to use this space, because it's great to have people come to the area, but I'd love it if people were utilizing Clear Creek Trail and walking and not feeling like they have to travel too far to get to this space. Thank you for all of us. It's really exciting.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This is really exciting to see the building wanting to be better, and this is such, sorry, it's just, it's a building that like everybody drives by, and it's kind of, it's such a great location. So the crux to my question is, what are the plans around like signage and placemaking to really activate the presence there and really like establish it as a creative space that it is obvious to anybody who is either visiting one of our city's greatest parks or just driving down Forty-Fourth or going to Pietra's? So are there any plans around like activating, do murals on it, like placemaking, signage, um, creative stuff that's going on inside the building, happening outside the building?
Yes, absolutely. We have actually talked to the Wheat Ridge High School art teacher very briefly about students doing a mural on the side of the building. And then we'll also have some large signage so that it's quite visible from somebody driving by of what the space is. But if there are specific ideas or thoughts on placemaking, obviously, y'all know I love to collaborate, so I'm happy to continue talking about that.
Did, I have a question. The signs that popped up on 38th Avenue, were those created in the makerspace? The Ridge on 38th signs, which, yeah, like the, yeah, the ones that...
The banners?
On the light poles?
Not the banners, like the things that are actually like on the sidewalk that showed up that say like 38th Ridge, yeah.
They were not created in the makerspace, but they can be when we have one?
Good answer. I mean, that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing. First of all, yes, bike parking, please provide bike parking. But yeah, that kind of creative like placemaking on the outside that like really signals that it's a creative space and would really love to, it's the corner you kind of notice, I think, really like visibly, and it's a really important civic space in our community. And so I'm really looking forward to seeing some like vibrancy and some creativity on the outside of the building, too. And if not, I'll be happy to do mural myself, so please get the high school students there first.
You're signed up.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Hulteen, for those questions about placemaking, because that building is, it's kind of incognito, so. My question is, if someone were to have a skill, maybe they're a paper crafter or like the textile, you know, quilter or whatever, would they be able to host their like own class there? Like, would they be able to say, like, go out into their own creative spaces and say, hey, I'm going to host a class on how to knit a hat, and it'll be at this makerspace? Or will there be like a different kind of fee structure for that type of thing?
Absolutely. I mean, if we can activate community members to be holding classes on behalf of the community, and our businesses will absolutely encourage it, that would be, depending on the instance, let's say somebody is willing to host a class, that might provide them a discount in membership because they're giving their time and resources to do that. And those are the types of partnerships that we're looking for, not just with Colorado School of Mines to bring in professors that actually speak about things, but also community members that clearly have these skills that they're wanting to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item before we go to a motion? Seeing none, Counselor Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 07-2023, a resolution authorizing a building lease between the city of Wheat Ridge and local works for 9110 West 44th Avenue.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Who had the second? Let's see, Mr. Stites? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move now to Agenda Item Number Six. Counselor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These will be motions to approve appointments to boards and commissions as of March, issue as of March 2nd, 2023. The terms of 19 board and commission members of the city of Wheat Ridge will expire. Additionally, there are four existing vacancies to fill, which include seats on the Board of Adjustment, Cultural Commission, Liquor Licensing Authority, and Parks and Rec Commission. These three positions in total are to be filled or reappointed.
Thank you very much. These will be motions and appointments by the council. This is not quasi-judicial. I think what we'd like to do is to do this by, first, let me ask if there's any, Mr. Goff, you don't have a staff presentation on this, because...
No, we don't.
I'd like to open up Item Number Six, or Item, I get Number Six, right? To public comment, if, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now and online also. I don't see anybody coming forward. So we're going to go by district on this, and if you would just kind of go down our list and make those individual nominations, we'll take that and a second, and then we will vote on each one. So if the clerk would keep his buttons handy, we'll start with Counselor Hoppy with District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And after the District One appointments, then I'll do the at-large.
That's correct.
Thank you. I move to appoint Al Gallo as a Building Code Advisory Board, term ending 0302-2026.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the nomination has been approved.
Okay. If there are any, if any of the counselors would like to speak on any of these, please let me know before we go to a vote. And Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Kathleen Martel to the Cultural Commission Board for District One, term ending 0302-2026. Second.
Second. All the, or clerk, please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. The appointment is approved.
Okay, thank you. And District One for the Cultural Commission?
Oh, I just did her. I'm going to do the...
Are you, are you dis...
Yeah, I'm doing this one.
Are you doing that one? Okay. Maybe I have an old, go ahead.
I move to appoint Patrick Quinn as an at-large alternate to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 0302-2025.
Second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
I have one more.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. The appointment is approved.
Okay. Counselor Hoppy?
I move to appoint Nathan Hoppy as an at-large member to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending 0302-2026.
Second. Motion and second. Clerk, poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination has been approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. And that's all on District One. Okay. Counselor Hulteen, would you please make the nominations for District Two?
It'd be my pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I move to appoint Larry Richmond, District Two, to the Board of Adjustment, term ending March 2nd, 2026.
Second. Someone?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ohm. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. The appointment is approved.
Okay. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you. I move to appoint Stephanie Taylor to the Cultural Commission for term ending March 2nd, 2026. Ms. Taylor is in the room, and I'd like to say thank her for her service and thank you for reapplying to continue on the Cultural Commission. Thanks.
Second. Second by Counselor Ohm. Please poll the council.
Ms. Hoppy, would you care to vote?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the nomination has been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you. I'd like to appoint, I move to appoint Christine Simoniak to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term ending on March 2nd, 2026. And I'd also like to thank Karen Stanley for her service representing our district.
Second.
Second by Counselor Ohm. Please poll the council.
The motion has passed unanimously. The nomination is approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you. And then I move to reappoint Christine Disney to the Planning Commission for a term ending March 2nd, 2026.
Second.
Second by Counselor Ohm. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. The appointment is approved.
Thank you very much. And that looks like all of the appointments in District Two? Thank you. Let's see, I will go to District Three. Counselor Weaver, would you please make these nominations?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Board of Adjustment, I move to appoint Lauren Sicard, term ending 32-2026.
Second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Nomination is approved unanimously, Mr. Weaver.
Okay. Counselor Weaver?
I move to appoint, excuse me, for Cultural Commission, that we have two appointees. I will do one and we'll vote, and then the other. I move to appoint Teresa Linder of District Three, term ending 32-2026.
Second. A motion made and second by Counselor Stites. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Also for Cultural Commission, I move to appoint Kathy Plummer of District Three, term ending 32-2026.
Second. Second by Counselor Stites. Please poll the council.
The nomination is approved unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you. We also have two District Three people for Parks and Recreation Commission. The first one is, I move to appoint Kathy Konids, term ending 32-2024.
Second. Second by Counselor Stites. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
And the second nomination for Parks and Recreation is Patrick Quinn of District Three, term ending 32-2026.
Second. Thank you by, please poll the council.
I do, I do want to say that Patrick Quinn, that we do have several people on two boards and commissions, so.
Please poll the council.
I don't think you can.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination is approved unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't believe you can be, sit on more than one board commission.
Patrick Quinn was appointed as the at-large alternative for the Board of Adjustment. He was also the only applicant.
Patrick, so, the one that we...
You can, you can sit on the Urban Authority and a Board of Adjustment, but you can't sit on two board and commissions, I believe is what our code says.
We had somebody before do that.
Yeah. It's not allowed. It's probably happened, but it's not allowed by code. You cannot sit on more than one board or commission at a time.
He's our only District Three nominee, so we'll have to...
Only one for cultural adjustment. I think my...
We had somebody do that before, though. This was for Quinn.
I'm gonna, Mr. Mayor, or?
Let's...
Okay, so we're going to check the code, and then, and then we may want to defer this just because I'd like to find out from...
Yeah, you want to move on to the others, or we'll come back?
Mr. Quinn, which...
Which what he wants?
Which he prefers, if that's the case.
Okay. Do you have another one for another position?
I think that's it for District Three.
Okay, let's go to District Four, and then we'll come back. And Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to appoint Paul Hubland to the Board of Adjustment, District Four, term ending 32-2026.
Second.
Second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination is approved unanimously.
No. We've got a lot. Okay. Counselor Dozeman?
I move to appoint Lindsay Burney to the Cultural Commission, District Four, term to expire 3/2, 2026. Second.
Second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination has been approved unanimously.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
I move to make an out-of-district appointment to fill a vacancy in the Cultural Commission. I move to appoint Kelly Brendan from District One, term ending 3/2, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and by Counselor Nosler Beck. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
I move to appoint Patricia Cerbera to the Parks and Recreation Commission for District Four, term ending 3/2, 2026.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the nomination has been approved unanimously.
Okay. Counselor Dozeman?
I move to appoint Andrew Rasmussen to the Parks and Recreation Commission for District Four, term ending 3/2, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Please poll the council.
The nomination has been approved unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dozeman?
I move to appoint Daniel Larson to the Planning Commission Board or Planning Commission for District Four, term ending 3/2, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Please poll the council.
The nomination has been approved unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before we go back to District Three, go... Excuse me, Counselor Nosler Beck.
Oh, second. I move...
I mean, Counselor Dozeman. Pardon me.
We're good. I know what you're... I move to make an out-of-district appointment of Clarence Fuller from District One to fill a vacancy in the District Four Liquor Licensing and Authority Board, term ending 3/2, 2024. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the nomination has been approved unanimously.
Okay. Does that conclude your nominations and appointments for District Four? There are two that are appointed by the mayor, and I would make a motion that we appoint Walt Pettit to the Renewal Wheat Ridge Board with a term ending March 2, 2028. Second. Second by Counselor Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I think you asked for the move, and then a council person says, "So moved," and then a council person seconds, and then you vote on it. So, if Mr. Stites would like to take it back and say, "So moved," and I'm happy to second that.
Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve Walt Pettit to the Renewal Wheat Ridge Board with a term ending March 2, the year of 2028. So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mayor Proton Stites and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Would the clerk please poll the council?
My button finger is here.
We seem to have four... No, here we are. Please press the button again. There we go. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, your nomination has been approved unanimously.
Okay. Actually, not my nomination, my suggestion or my recommendation. So, I will recommend the council make a motion to appoint Shane Nicholson to the Renewal Wheat Ridge Board for term ending March 2, the year of 2028. So moved. Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Hulteen.
Second.
And do I have a motion? So, we have Hulteen and Hoppy for a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
I think we've overheated the board. Mr. Mayor, the appointment has been approved unanimously.
Okay. And this is District Three. This one here. Here. At large.
We can also have them stay at large and have somebody else.
We can't because in code you can't have...
Okay. So, we need to... Have we made a motion that we need to rescind, or do we...
I would ask our city attorney, do we need to rescind the motion for the at-large term, or do we need to make a new motion to leave that seat open and look for applicants? Because there are no applicants available.
I think you can do it all in the same motion, rescind the appointment and further move to readvertise, et cetera.
Thank you. And I do believe that we had already voted on the Parks and Commission, so we don't need to redo that one.
No, we did not.
Oh, we didn't vote?
No.
Oh, I pushed the button.
So, if you want to appoint him to Parks and Rec...
Does he need to be rescinded?
Yes.
I make a motion to rescind the... I make a motion to rescind the appointment to the Board of Adjustment of Mr. Patrick Quinn, the term that would be at-large, and to furthermore keep that position open for more applicants to apply.
Second. So, there's a motion and a second to... Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay. Are... Or does the... Are there any counselors that need to make any further motions? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you. I would like to appoint Patrick Quinn for District Three, Parks and Rec Commission, term ending 3/02-2026.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Would you please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
I just want to confirm that there was a motion to appoint a District Four Board of Adjustment member. I'm not sure if I cut that. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I think we have everybody appointed. Is there anyone... Any further appointments that we need to address under item number six? Okay. Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number seven. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve a contract amendment with Concrete Works of Colorado for Phase II-A of the Improved Wadsworth Project, subject to CDOT approval in the amount of $11,144,015.87, with an additional contingency of $750,000, for a total of $11,894,015.87. At issue, staff recommends approval of a contract amendment with Concrete Works Colorado, Inc., to complete Phase II-A of Improved Wadsworth Project. Concrete Works is completing the initial phase of work in the corridor. The cost of Phase II-A contract amendment is $11,894,015.87, which includes the cost of the roadway work, water-related improvements, and a $750,000 contingency for unexpected items. Staff is working with the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, to acquire their concurrence on this contract amendment. Therefore, this action is subject to CDOT approval.
Thank you very much. This is... Will be a motion to the council, not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation on this.
We do. Maria DeAndrea, our Public Works Director.
Director DeAndrea?
Thank you. Yes, I'll just go over a brief presentation. There are a lot of elements to this project, and so we wanted to be clear in that before proceeding or before council takes action on this. So, we did discuss this previously in December, talking about the idea of potentially awarding another phase or a contract amendment to Concrete Works of Colorado, who is currently working on the Wadsworth Project. That initial project was awarded in August of 2021, so we've been at work out there a little over a year now, almost a year and a half. And that total contract amount was just under $35 million. So, in fall of last year, we actually solicited pricing from Concrete Works for Phase II because we really felt that there was the potential for both cost and time savings and reduced construction impacts to adjacent businesses and the people traveling through the corridor. And as we've seen and as I'll show in more detail, there has been a lot of volatility within the construction market. So, we've heard that both from CDOT, from other agencies, and those pricing, we anticipate that that will continue to increase. So, we feel like this is a good time to move forward with this and feel like that these prices are reasonable. So, we did discuss this, as I mentioned, with council, and that direction at that time was to proceed with Phase II if we could identify the funding, which we have. So that, as I mentioned, the pricing that we are working with Concrete Works has increased significantly in some areas. So, again, for concrete, irrigation, and anything electrical related. So, we are putting up street or decorative streetlights. Our signal work involves a lot of electrical, as well as anything that has plastics or metal associated with that. So, there's not only chain... Supply chain issues involved there, but also just the cost of the materials, how they're getting them, how they're procuring them, and then those prices, along with labor, is driving those prices significantly. So, just a little bit of a reminder here. So, that first phase essentially went to roughly 41st Avenue and included the continuous-flow intersection at 44th Avenue with the intent that the remainder of the work would be constructed in a later phase. We did include some options that would add the sidewalks and some of the streetscape elements all the way down to 35th Avenue. Phase II then would complete essentially that work in that... Those option section all the way from south of 41st or 38th, construct that continuous-flow intersection, so not put in a new signal there, but do the continuous flow. And then we would add all of the three lanes, as well as the noise wall on the east side of the roadway adjacent to the assisted living facility. So, as I mentioned, AECOM, who's our current construction manager, they did complete an independent cost estimate that was prepared before we received the pricing from the contractor so that we could do truly determine whether this was a reasonable cost or not. AECOM utilized CDOT cost data. They track that for all projects that are completed, and we have seen even within 2022 that cost data has increased significantly. However, some of the items, CDOT typically doesn't do irrigation or a lot of landscaping on their projects, so some of those items were more difficult to get comparison pricing for. So, AECOM used basically their knowledge from other local agency projects to do an educated estimate for those. But overall, they feel that the prices are fair and reasonable based on the current market conditions. So, some of those other factors that go into kind of non-funding related or non-monetary related, it does allow us to do that work concurrently for the most part. So, while it does increase the overall timeline by roughly a year, we anticipated that if we had bid Phase II separately and tacked it on to the end or in the future, we would take roughly 18 to 24 months, or almost two years. This way, we can... Yes, we're adding another year, but we feel like we can save roughly a year by doing it concurrent... That work concurrently. And also, we don't need to construct those throwaway items. So, for example, if we were under Phase One as it's currently proposed, we would put a new signal in at 38th Avenue. We will eliminate that from the Phase One contract and instead do the continuous-flow intersection. If we were to proceed with Phase One, build the signal, we would have to tear that out in the future, and of course, we don't want to do that. We're doing all of the underground work at once, and again, those construction impacts would be consolidated. So, while it does extend the overall time period, hopefully, we can communicate that with the public, with adjacent businesses, to help them understand that there is a light at the end of the tunnel, and we're shortening that as much as possible. And another kind of element, so as I mentioned, AECOM is our construction management and testing firm. So, for 2023, they have indicated there will be no increase in their price. They can absorb the work that needs to be done for Phase II in 2023 without an increase. They're already doing it for Phase One. They feel that they can do Phase II testing and the overall construction management within that existing price. So, that does save, again, about a year of those costs. We have worked with the Wheat Ridge Water District. So, similar to Phase One, there was a lot of water replacement that needed to be done. Wheat Ridge Water District is reimbursing us for that, the city, for that Phase One work. They want to do the same thing in Phase II. So, there's underground water mains that need to be replaced, as well as some laterals, some new service lines and fire hydrants. So, they've agreed, at least at this point, to amend their existing agreement, and we anticipate that that will come back to council on our next regular meeting on March 13. We're still working through some of the details, so the total reimbursement amount has actually increased. So, the council memo talks about a total of $964,414.63 that has increased by roughly $120,000. So, we're now at just over $1 million for their total reimbursement. And that's based on just some increases in quantity that their engineer had missed on the plan. So, we feel that that's a much more accurate number. That will be the number that we'll bring forward on March 13. And so, I've modified the agreement on the slides here to take that into consideration in the overall totals. As the motion states, we are requiring this or subject to CDOT concurrence. As you all know, Wadsworth is a CDOT-owned roadway, so we are working out there through a permit through CDOT and as well as there is federal and state funds being utilized to construct that roadway. Therefore, both CDOT and the Federal Highway Administration have essentially a say in how we proceed, and therefore, they must concur with doing this contract amendment before we can proceed. I spoke with the local agency representative, their local agency engineer from CDOT this afternoon, and they have been talking with FHWA, but they have not given us clear direction yet. And so, they do want to involve Federal Highway Administration because the unit prices are increasing from Phase One, and they want to make sure that that's okay. So, we are making the motion tonight, subject to their concurrence, and we hope that we can receive that within the next couple of weeks so that we can move forward with the notice to proceed to Concrete Works. Finally, we'll go through the slides here just for the costs. So, as I mentioned, I put that in italics, the Wheat Ridge Water District amount has increased slightly. So, we are looking at construction overall. The pricing modifications is about in case that the CDOT concurrence requires a little bit of a delay, there may be some changes to those prices. That's how volatile the market is right now. Concrete Works is really looking for possible notice to proceed tomorrow because their pricing is so critical and their subs are holding their prices until we get direction. If we can't give that direction and don't get that answer from CDOT, we may need to extend that, and there may be some slight price increases there as well. So, our subtotal and then our contingency remains the same, so the bottom line now for Phase II-A is just over $12 million, as indicated there. And we were successful. Our engineering division of the Community Development Department submitted four, and we were successful in receiving $4 million of additional federal funds through the Omnibus Funding Bill in fiscal year 2023. So, that's great news. That can all be applied to Phase II. But we first... Before we can spend that or encumber that, we do want to formally accept that. So, we have received documentation that we have received it from the Senator's Office, but we do need to first go through some sort of agreement, most likely it'll be through CDOT, to accept that, and therefore, we're breaking this up into a Phase II-A and a Phase II-B. We want to make sure that we accept that money probably later in sometime in 2023 before we encumber that through the Phase II-B process. And there's just a summary of all the costs. Again, you can see the Wheat Ridge Water District amount increases slightly. The Phase II cost... Phase II-B is really about waiting for that $4 million so that we can move forward with that portion of it. And then the funding, as it shows there, that congressionally-directed spending, or CDS, is $4 million, then the Wheat Ridge Water District amount, and then all the remaining costs would be on the city to cover for Phase II. So, with that, staff would recommend approval of this contract amendment. Again, we feel those prices are reasonable, but it is subject to CDOT approval in the end. So, this is the modified motion, and the only change is here is that the dollar amounts have changed for both that subtotal of $11,265,000 and then the final total of $12,015,000. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director DeAndrea. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open it up to the public for a comment from the public. a comment from the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you'd like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium, and if you are online, raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anyone coming forward to speak, and I'll ask our clerk if anyone has raised their hands.
No, Mr. Mayor.
No one on the, online, so I'll go with two questions from council. Councilor Ohm.
Before I do, I want to have a lot of questions. Is there any other council members that want to go forward?
Any other questions before Councilor Ohm starts to enumerate his questions? Go ahead, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions I did have were the, there is a statement on page 251 that talks about the irrigation items. Fifty percent was added, and it talked about a limited C dot data, which is kind of a standard a lot of municipalities use, that C dot data for getting the cost estimates. I don't know if everybody's familiar with that. But anyway, as I, the one thing I just wanted to look over, I was looking over the bids for the landscape and irrigation, and there's some items that really jumped out at me. And one of those items, I'm looking on page 261, this is just one item, I'm just trying to shine a light on this, is that it says that a one-inch control valve is $842, and I know that includes labor, but the item itself, I call DVC irrigation today, is only $120, $150. And so industry standards, usually you double the cost of a valve. This is three and a half times that. And it's not just one thing, but it really starts to add up when we're taking something that appears to be three and a half times what would normal be. And so this isn't a 50% increase, this is, this is a lot more than that. And there's a lot of items that, as I'm looking through this, they just seem really, really, really high. And then there's some items that I don't quite understand on page, let's see here, 278, or no, excuse me, 256. I'm looking at the bottom, and they have a quote for a wildlife biologist at $10 an hour. That seems extremely low for wildlife biologist or removal of nest, but like, I'm really curious how they found a wildlife biologist at $10 an hour. But then I go to page, I think it's 278, and then that fee goes to 115. I think that might have been off the C dot. And so I feel like a lot of the, you know, probably more the irrigation, but I guess that maybe the landscape too, that I'm very hesitant to say that, I mean, I know things have gone up. We've all seen the entire budget go 100%, but a lot of these items are well beyond 100%. They're, like I said, three and a half times, and that I am concerned, are we getting the best bang for the buck? And I wonder if we might want to consider pulling the landscape and irrigation out of this and having those items procure new pricing for those items as part of the Phase Two, I think it's, I think it's the Phase Two A and the Phase Two B, correct?
Correct. So that is a possibility, is to remove those landscaping items and get different pricing. One of the elements that we did hear back from the contractor who had spoken with their sub, and part of it is that we're not installing the landscaping until probably the latter part of 2024 and into 2025. And therefore, they're pricing now in early 2023 for a good year plus and two years out. So they were probably anticipating or modifying, limiting their risk, if you will, by increasing those prices. So there is the, if, as you mentioned, Councilmember Ohm, we could delay that into the Phase Two B or possibly even later to try and narrow down that window so that they're pricing it much closer to when the landscaping actually goes in.
Thank you. And then the other thing that, that I saw in some of these notes was it said that perhaps the original drawings for irrigation was all drip, which is really water conserving, but now park staff has decided that they want to make it overhead. And the issue with that is that the overhead irrigation is going to be spraying, it's going to be all over the curb and gutter, it's not very water efficient. I really would like to see that drip, especially since we are now bringing forth a study session that I brought up, and my co-councilors have sponsored that, you know, an effort to be sustainable and save water, but now we're, it sounds like we might be going backwards, and we're using overhead for something that would be drip, and the overhead is actually more cost later than the drip. That's something I would like for us to reconsider. So that's it, that's all.
Oh, that's it, okay, good.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, as we look at this bid sheet, and you were saying, you know, the landscape is a year and a half to two years out, and so of course, they're doing their best guess on the estimate. Do we have any sort of look back to where, like, once we get closer, we can look back to the prices and then see if they can sharpen their pencil on those pieces, or any sort of, you know, is this, this is a lump sum contract, as I understand it?
It's not a lump sum, but we are setting the prices today for those future items. So I think the, as far as a look back, we could not modify them in the future. Instead, it would be better to remove them and bid them at a later date. Now, the risk there is that it continues to go up potentially, but again, if the concern from the sub is that it's a year and a half, two years out, then maybe that reduces the risk by bidding at a future date.
And the landscaping, so, you know, oftentimes, these subs do more than just one piece, and so is the landscaping, are you aware, is the landscaping a single sub, or are they also a person that is doing some of the lighting and the concrete work and stuff like that?
No, it's just the landscaping elements, so installing all of the irrigation, as well as all the plant material, and then any of the, like, boulders, those decorative rock elements, that's the only work that that sub is doing.
Okay, so the landscaping is their full scope?
Correct.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Okay, thank you very much, Director DeAndrea. Councilor Hulteen, can you provide a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to approve a contract amendment with Concrete Works of Colorado, Inc. of Lafayette, Colorado, for Phase Two A of the improved Wadsworth project, subject to C dot approval, in the amount of $11,265,669.17, with an additional contingency of $750,000, for a total of $12,015,669.17.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, I would just like to know if council generally supports, at the very least, revising the irrigation plan for drip versus overhead spray.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that's kind of a double-edged sword because of where you could end up down the road in a year and a half, and you could potentially end up with a whole different contractor also, or subcontractor. So for, for me, I don't know that I would support that, but Councilperson Ohm, this would be a situation where procedurally, you can make an amendment to the motion to ask to remove the landscape services, and then you, if you get a second for that, then it'll go, it goes to a vote first before the main motion, and then the main motion will be voted on as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Councilor Ohm for his research on this. It's really, really appreciated, and it does give me pause, just in part because when Ms. DeAndrea was saying that C dot doesn't typically do this, and so some of, you know, the numbers and Concrete Works might not do this often either, and so there is a possibility that what we're getting is, is, you know, sub-subcontractors, and, you know, then what you get is administrative markups through all of that, so, I mean, there could be good cause to, and if I'm understanding you correctly, Councilor Ohm, you were suggesting not that we rebid it through Concrete Works, but that the, that the city actually take on the landscaping itself and look for a contractor. Would you mind clarifying that?
I think my understanding was that we would withhold the funds for Phase Two A to be the landscape irrigation. That was, that was one, one issue, and we could, and then we would ask for, would Concrete Works then rebid that out to a different sub?
It could be the same sub. Most likely, it will be the same because they're using this particular subcontractor to fulfill their disadvantaged business enterprise percentage. So we would like, they would likely use the same subcontractor. Again, it would just limit the time or reduce the time in between when installation occurs, but also it would give us time then to evaluate the drip versus the, the drip versus the overhead spray system and possibly modify that.
And then the, then the second issue was, and what I was proposing before Councilor Hoppe said something, was that, at the very least, I was thinking that, I wasn't feeling consensus that that was going to happen, but that the, having it done as a drip irrigation, I feel a lot more strongly over, I just wanted to shine a light on the, on the fees that were being charged, and I have the fees, you know, just to give you an idea, these aren't a lot, it's like 1.898 is, you know, oh seven seven, that's the total of landscape irrigation right now. Like, how much could it be reduced? Maybe by half. Is it worth doing it? You know, we have to decide as a council, you know, maybe it might be half. I don't know if it'd be less than half that we would save. But the other issue that I feel a little more strongly about is definitely the having the drip irrigation, that I know that can absolutely be done. I'm not sure why we're doing overhead, you know, in the medians, because I know what's going to happen. I'm going to drive by it, I'm going to see water trickling everywhere, it's going to be really wasteful, and then we're going to have this study session about how we're going to save water, and the constituents are going to start emailing and saying, what's going on here? You're talking about advocating for water efficiency, but you're, you have overhead sprays in the medians, you know, this, it's going to be a big contrast, it's going to be hard to get people behind that. So that's the, that's the bigger one that I feel like fighting for, you know, but I just want, I just wanted to bring it up, you know, just, I've done my homework, I've read the packets, this, you know, it's something that I deal with every day, and I just wanted to kind of bring, bring forth to everybody and see kind of where we're at. And I'm okay if you don't want this to be redid, I'm fine with that, but I feel a little more strongly about the water conservation.
So, so I have a question then, so given that, and I certainly invite Councilor Ohm if he wants to put forth an amendment for consideration, but would an option be, given the strength of his feelings about the drip irrigation, which I agree with, could that be set aside and be reevaluated and when Phase Two A comes back to us, which it sounds like would be later this year, that that could be a change order consideration within that? Like, how, how could that be managed through this process, given that we're already splitting it into two?
Yes, so again, we would probably, what we would do is recommend eliminating, there's multiple lines that that would affect, so we would probably, the amendment would be is approve this subject to removal of the landscape irrigation-related items, and we would bring those back for consideration as part of the Phase Two B contract amendment.
Okay, thank you. Then the other thing that I just wanted to call attention to, and I realize this is a Wadsworth Phase One problem, but, so I recognize as it's moving through the different phasings, that different conditions are happening. I, as many of you know, live on the west side of Wadsworth, and I ride my bike. It is almost impossible for a pedestrian or a bicyclist to get through 44th and Wadsworth right now. It is absolutely chaotic. There is no safe refuge for anyone who's not in a car, and there are no alternatives other than going all the way over to 38th Avenue. So I'd like to request that the contractor give consideration for people that at any given time can get through on one side or the other. It is, I'm a very confident bicyclist, and it is terrifying for me, and it is, it's the only way to get out of my neighborhood, so with that, thank you.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have procedural question. So, so it's been suggested that the, the motion can be amended, amendment can be attached to it by Councilperson Ohm if you'd like to, or the original motion maker can make a friendly amendment and change, change the motion, and that would be to remove the landscape scope. Here, so here's my other question. Could we, would we, could we carry forward with this motion and then make another motion directing staff to, to move forward with drip irrigation rather than overhead irrigation, understanding that that could potentially, in the latter, end up with a change order? Which, procedurally, which one would be more clarifying, which would be cleaner, and also knowing that you have to go back to the general contractor, you have to renegotiate with them either way, whether we take the landscape out of this original motion or whether we make a motion saying we want to change the irrigation from overhead to drip?
Yeah, I believe probably the latter of those options, if I understand correctly. So approving these with the dollar amounts as indicated, but then directing staff to reevaluate the drip versus, so just similar to what we talked about with the signal at 38th, that was included in Phase One, but now we're removing it and replacing it with the CFI. So we would remove possibly the drip irrigate, excuse me, the overhead spray and replace it with drip, which would be a future change order.
So carry forward with the motion that we have, and then a secondary motion to change from overhead to irrigation drip. Would you agree with that, City Attorney?
Yeah, no, that would work, and that would allow you to vote on the motion that's pending and still address this issue.
Thank you.
But we could, could we direct staff to do that rather than taking a motion on that? Just direct staff to investigate the, a change in the irrigation system?
Well, as the council, you have to act as the council anyhow. It's important enough, I think, that probably staff would appreciate that there's a motion and they actually have a vote so that they really see a lineup on that.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about, why are we using water-to-water landscape in a median? I mean, serious. When we have water issues and, you know, you could do a lot of things with rocks and things, why do we need to use water in a median?
I think all of the materials were intended to be water, low water usage or zero scapeing. However, that still requires irrigation to establish them and maintain them, especially it's a relatively harsh environment with, you know, a lot of probably snow spray, you know, we'll have mag chloride being, and through snow being thrown up onto the, both the medians and the shoulders. And so I think that the intent was to design that such, but that it would require irrigation no matter what, unless we went with all rocks and all boulders throughout. So I think the vision for that was really a mixture of plants, but trying to be thoughtful about making them as low water usage as possible.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, one more procedural question. Could we potentially maintain the motion that has been made and seconded, having a friendly amendment adding to change to, adding to change the irrigation to drip irrigation and kill two birds with one motion stone?
Sure, I think so, as long as the maker of the motion, the second, would agree, and in terms of direction to staff, that would be clear. Sounds like it would be.
Thank you. I just wanted to give away their options.
Okay, Councilor Hulteen?
More procedural questions. So in doing so, we will be affecting the cost, I'm guessing? So does that cost just float into the contingency, or does that come back to council?
I think we're fine with the numbers as the, the option that we're talking about, so we're approving it, but then we're going to go back to the drawing board, if you will, and reevaluate that, so there may then be a future change order which would modify these dollar amounts.
Okay, thank you. I am happy to make that friendly amendment, if that is the wish of Councilor Ohm.
And Councilor, so we have a friendly amendment, which... And councillor so we have a friendly amendment which changes the landscaping from overhead to under to below ground and councillor Hoppy you have the the motion or the second on that is that approved?
I approve.
Okay so we have a restated motion?
Yes.
Okay so further discussion on the restated motion?
I really appreciate everyone for your consideration on conserving water in Wheat Ridge thank you.
Okay with that let us go to a vote will the clerk please poll the council?
Mister mayor the friendly amended motion has been passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you director DeAndrea for a good presentation on that item. We will now go back to our agenda and I think we are at city managers matters mister Goff?
Nothing else this evening, thank you mayor.
Okay, thanks so much. Go to city attorneys matters mister Dahl?
Just to thank the council for addressing the issue about the no one board or commission member can serve on two boards or commissions and a couple of points around that there's two things going on as council is well aware you have the equal representation rule that if you can't get someone within the district and you've done advertising then you can take someone from out of the district and that's a separate rule though from the can't serve on one more than one board or commission rule and I wanted to point out that that's a rule that's present in the code and so it's within your power to change if you wish it's been there since the late 70s as far as I can tell looking at the code and kind of my own recollection which doesn't go back to the late 70s at least not for for the city but nevertheless it's it's been there since the 90s put it that way but it is within your control that's in code section 253 comes up every few years and I'm not suggesting you would want to make the change but it given the discussion that happened tonight I wanted to make certain that you knew that it was within your power to change it if you wish and you could alter that can't serve on more than one board or commission it's already an exception for members that serve on the city's election commission which is a very small three-member body but if from a policy standpoint you wanted to change that you've got the power to do it and that's all I've got, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go to elected officials matters and start with our clerk.
Thank you mister mayor. I wanted to review a couple of things about appointing people to boards and commissions just so that council has it in front of mind. What we've done tonight fills everything that we could. There will of course be vacancies soon. People move out of town whatever. We will keep the applications we receive on file for one year per code and if a vacancy on a board or commission from a particular district comes available we will first go to the applications that are already on file. Then we must also advertise each of the vacancies in the newspaper for a period of at least two weeks before we bring to council any nominees applicants. There are a number of people who will be disappointed tonight because we we called them up and said would you be willing to consider this and those folks are of course the primary source of additional appointments. I would therefore recommend that if you have someone in your district who was not appointed tonight that you go to them and say there will be future opportunities please don't be discouraged. The three gentlemen I spoke to about joining the liquor authority board out of district to represent district four all had put applications in but no one knew whether they were willing to serve still willing to serve or not because their applications were in some cases six or eight months old. So the bottom line is maintain that pool of folks in your districts because change is happening much more quickly than I would perhaps like. The last thing to remind you of is if a vacancy occurs in an out of district seat someone is serving for district four and out of district one we are required by law to move the new person into the right district. In order to do that we have to go through a process that the city attorney can outline very quickly and simply but what it announced to is you must have the person sitting in that seat resigned we usually ask them to make their resignation effective on the Sunday before the board or the council is going to meet to appoint somebody in that seat. So there are some cases where we must for instance move a liquor board member or a planning commission member from an out of district seat into their their own district. Someone from district one recently was reappointed to the liquor authority board for that very reason. If you have questions call me, call Robin, call the administrative staff and we will be glad to help you. But this is a little bit more involved than we might like for it to be. Not in this annual exercise but in all of those periods in between. We've actually had board members move out of state and forget to mention to anybody that they elected. So please keep that on your radar screen think of talking to people who would be good members of the liquor authority board or good members of planning whatever you see coming down the road. Thank you mister.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson?
I just have a question about what the city clerk just said. We have chairman that are on each one of these boards and things maybe they could communicate when a vacancy has occurred.
Yes ma'am and as a matter of fact they are elected by the board and the liaison the staff person who is assigned to that board or commission also notifies the clerk's office when a vacancy has occurred and then we all go to work. Did I answer your question?
Because we don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
Right? Yeah, okay so on my part a couple of weeks ago I brought up an issue about a stop sign at 33rd and Lamar I did get an email from Jordan Jeffries of the neighborhood traffic project and it seems like it has been approved so there will be a stop sign and that is for safety so that's good and I want to thank all the people who are on the boards and commissions for their time their volunteering their contribution to the city I really appreciate it I mean I've been on a commission before and it's very interesting so it's good and as a last note three weeks until spring.
Thank you. Councillor Nosler Beck?
Thanks I also want to thank everyone who applied and went through the process of of serving on a board or commission and going through that process and navigating all of that was just really appreciated and we had some interesting things happen in district four where people we had quite a few applicants for some boards and commissions like parks and rec and then didn't have some in others and serving on any board is an incredible opportunity to learn and once you're you're on a board then you know maybe you'll learn about other openings and things so I just really encourage people to continue to to apply and keep their eyes open and always feel free to reach out to myself or councillor Dozeman about applying just so appreciative of people's time and effort in that and we just got to keep it up and maybe next time around we'll we'll be able to fill all these slots with district four residents. I had a couple of announcements that oh and let me just say thank you to those district residents who are coming from other districts to come and serve too we're really appreciative of that. But a couple of things next week Monday March 6th Jeffco School Board and the superintendent I think it's actually just the superintendent will be hosting a Wheat Ridge Community Conversation at Wheat Ridge High School so Monday March 6th at 5:30 that goes from 5:30 to 7:00 so I know I'll be there for the first part of the meeting but then have to cut out to get over to council but keep that on your radar and then just a couple other things happening my kids swim with the Wheat Ridge Piranhas and they're starting their spring training coming up on April 2nd so if you visit their website you can sign up for spring training and get engaged and if there's anyone out there that's looking to to a great organization to support please consider Wheat Ridge Promise. And then lastly I've talked about this business a few times now but Out of Step Clay is going to be celebrating their one-year anniversary on April 22nd which happens to be Earth Day from 4:00 to 9:00 PM at Out of Step Clay on 38th and they are theming the the big party with fire pots not guns year one anniversary benefit party for Earth Day so just wanted to put that out there just some fun stuff going on.
Thank you. Councillor Holteen?
Thank you mister mayor I just want to celebrate some things that make our city great first of all it was really exciting to see the recognition of the amazing women who are in leadership roles in our city and I'm sorry Karen Karen wasn't standing amongst you but I take a lot of pride in just how amazing our executive team is and how many women are in positions there and up here in council we are a woman-majority council and I love telling people that. I also loved getting on the website recently our website's looking fresher it's got a it's perky it's got like a new more inviting skin to it so I just thank you that was kind of fun to come across. And then I also just want to thank the clerk's office and everyone who worked on the boards and commissions process this time from from the council side the format of the applications the way it was presented to us all of the communication and information in it was just really coherent and well thought out and made it really easy to navigate and take a look at but I so I read all of the applications not even just for district two and it's like reading Wheat Ridge's Got Talent. We have so many extraordinary people living in our city who are willing to volunteer their time and make our city better and it's a shame I just think we should make some more boards and commissions so we can set them on there. But I just I appreciate everyone who applied and the people who serve and the staff who helped connect those folks with us I could tell that our outreach was was better we had a really good pool this year and so I'm I'm looking forward to working with with people who reapplied and new people and I just want to thank everyone who made the process better on our end. And then the last thing I just want to mention so I am on the Partners in Progress Committee with Local Works and it is a great place to get involved if you're interested in what it takes to help move our city forward in exciting and sometimes complicated ways and our next meeting is on March 15th at 5:30 and I served on the committee in its original iteration several years ago and it's actually how I learned how the city works and some of my deepest relationships in the city and some of my dearest friendships came out of that committee so I would encourage anybody who's interested in really rolling up their sleeves to get in the sausage factory of the city Partners in Progress on March 15th at 5:30 hope to see you there.
Thank you so much. Councillor Dozeman?
Thank you mister mayor I wanted to echo the a thank you to all of the community members that applied for our boards and commissions you really are such a welcomed group of folks that really helped this city run and give us great feedback and help us make things happen so I really appreciate all of that and unfortunately you know it has been hard in the past to either fill vacancies district four we really struggle in appointing people from our our district so I do appreciate the out of district appointments and people you know stepping up and wanting to help out and thank you to our staff for the undertaking and supporting those that want to be involved and if you weren't selected this time around please either consider other appointments boards and commissions or like council member Holteen said look at some other programs that are offered either through Local Works or other service organizations. We have a lot within Wheat Ridge that do a great deal within this community you know Kiwanis Rotary Optimists so there's plenty of opportunities to get involved in our community other than just boards and commissions and then I really wanted to give a shout out to Local Works and Paige and her team they have been doing a phenomenal job I'm really excited to see this Makerspace come to fruition you know I think that this not only our council our staff but some of those community organizations really create make those turn those ideas into action and how I got involved civically was with Wheaties Academy through Local Works then Wheat Ridge 2020 and that program really opened my eyes onto the placemaking that our community could create and some of these pie in the sky ideas that we've had over the years you know the Porchlight Family Justice Center was one of them and then this Makerspace with Local Works and to see these ideas actually come to be a reality has been wonderful up here on the dais and seeing multiple partners within the city and the county and the state and I just I think it's a tremendous undertaking and really appreciate the support from staff and my colleagues here on the dais and then also the partnerships that we've been able to build throughout the community as a whole so I just wanted to give a shout out and and appreciation, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Weaver?
Thank you mister mayor I think we all know why people serve on boards and commissions in the city and it's for the schwag so just want to keep it going that if you're on a board or commission I didn't know this until five years in on the planning commission that the boards and commissions dinner is number one it's awesome and number two Wheat Ridge has some of the best schwag ever last year it was socks it's been blankets it's been beer glasses charcuterie board anyway I just want to say that and of course the other perk is the rec center so that's that's a huge thing so I just wanted to just be honest with everybody on why we do this. We're having a district three meeting on the 11th at 9 o'clock at the rec center and we're going to talk about district three stuff and maybe we're going to explain all the boards and commissions. But I just also wanted to echo thanks for everyone on boards and commissions and for the women who accepted the Women's Day month history proclamation I was told that somebody had tap shoes though so I'd like to know who that is okay that's I kind of figured okay but thank you for for recognizing that I just think this is an amazing city and and I really like that we just have so much leadership and Lauren I think you said it best but just how the city functions it is more invisible and and that's that's really awesome so thank you.
Thank you councillor Weaver and going now to councillor Oom.
Okay, thank you mayor. I was able to attend the AVI affordable housing in Irvine last week and it was a good turnout I saw the Lori Rosenthal CEO foothills housing had a good conversation with her our own Zach Urban director regional director of HUD was there had a little chat with him and then and got to meet David Schaefer who's the executive vice president of First Bank who's a partner with the foothills and he said he used to work out of the Wadsworth location which is going to be the our future site of affordable housing across the street there looking forward to that and you know it's really nice to see how many people turn out for these affordable housing openings and all different I saw all different developers and different people that I've kind of crossed paths with before. I also want to I want to say a special thank you to director Maria I called her up this morning I had some concerns about some of the pricing and and she you know she she was really thoughtful about like you know I'm going to get back to you I'm going to put something together and she even you know put together a little motion for me so really thank you for that I know sometimes it's a you know it's a little painful for everybody as you know I kind of go through these and I really appreciate your help everybody and and I definitely want to thank Patrick you know there's a lot of times it doesn't it goes without saying you know you make some really good hiring decisions all three all three right there yes rock stars. I I saw I saw Maria it was I think it was at the event for the Ad- Ads and and I thought to myself like she she doesn't feel like she's been here a year she feels like she's been here like 10 you know you're very you're You know, you're very, you settled in, you know, and I was really appreciative that, you know, Lauren was there and Patrick was there, you know, supporting the Ad-Apps. And so thank you for your hiring. And then I also want to, this is kind of probably overdue, but I've been here a little over a year. I guess asked all the time, how do you like being on council, wherever I go? And I tell them honestly, it's like, I love it. I have a very supportive council. We are always civic. I really love being with everybody on council. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. You know, I've been here for over a year, and I really, sincerely, I do really thank you for all your support. And I do think we do have something really special. And I know we've said it before, we do have something really special on council. Thank you, and Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to draw attention to the Wheat Ridge Musical at the high school. It's going to be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Singing in the Rain. And if you would like to go support our students in the musical. And then I would also like to ask if I can get support to bring to a future study session our codes around boards and commissions. There's a few things, like Attorney Dahl brought up, where if we wanted to change in the code that someone could sit on more than one board at a time, we can change that in the code. It's not according to charter. But also, we don't have limits, like how many times you can serve. And I do understand that there are times when we're trying, when we're still trying very hard to fill seats, and so we wouldn't necessarily want to limit somebody else, so that would have, we'd have to be careful around our language with that to make sure that we are not, you know, pigeonholing ourselves. But I think that that's something that we could consider. And then also, there's probably some modifications we could make to the application where we could put something on there that says, would you be interested in serving on a different board if you're not appointed to this board? Or if you're not appointed to this board, would you like your application removed? So some things that could make the process just a little more clear. So I would just like to see if anybody would like to support me and bring that to a future study.
Second.
Super. Because this was a long, this has been a long week for me, working on this boards and commissions stuff. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody up here, and I know that when we're, you know, rapid-fire going through stuff, it can get, it can get a little bit flustered, but everybody did a really good job keeping it straight. So thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank all of the ladies that I serve with up here and all of the staff members that do a phenomenal job for us. And I also want to thank everybody who applied for and now are serving on boards and commissions. It's a, it's a big deal. It's how we run the city, so we really appreciate that. Couple of things, as Ms. Weaver said, March 11th, we're looking at 9:00 a.m. at the Rec Center for the District Three meeting. That'll be our first for the year, so we'll kind of go over everything that has gone on over the last couple of months and look forward through the rest of the year. I'm not sure if everybody knew, I was alerted to it two Mondays ago, but Wheat Ridge High School is, their bond funding is kind of coming up in front of the school board and has been a discussion over the last couple of weeks. So I know we had a lot of community members reach out to the school board just to make sure that all that bond funding goes through. There were a couple of projects that they were possibly looking at scratching off the, off of the table there, but it looks like it's hopefully all going to go through. We've had Councilor Nosler Beck and I went two Fridays ago and met with the current principal, Jeff Fujita, and the new principal, Lisa Momen. I'm not exactly sure how to pronounce her last name, but she's phenomenal, by the way. And also board member, or not board members, but district staff, and the now former head coach of the basketball team, Tommy Dowd, and his son, the new head coach. And we looked at what the gym floor is, and that gym floor was installed in 1957 when that school was built. It is sanded down past where you should sand down a school floor. It's tripping hazards all over the place. So that is something that was on the docket to be completely not refurbished, replaced. So hopefully that's going to go through. So as Councilor Nosler Beck said, the superintendent, Tracy Dorland, will be at Wheat Ridge High School on March 6th from 5:30 to 7:00. That's definitely something that I know I'll be attending before we have council that night. And I encourage everybody from our city to be there as well. Let our superintendent, let the school board know that we are paying attention and that we do expect that they back Wheat Ridge, as we've received emails from the former principal, Griff Worth, and others saying that Wheat Ridge Council hasn't always been a part of this, but the school board is excited to have us as partners. They want to see us show up to these meetings and hold them accountable. On a different note, I'm excited, we've had a bunch of ribbon cuttings the last couple of weeks. We had one at Binge Hot Chicken on Wadsworth, which was fantastic, and one right next to it at TruEssence Salon. I was honored to get to cut the ribbon at Cutthroat Barbers on 38th Avenue, which is really cool, because when I walked in, the lady that's been cutting my hair since I was four years old at the Applewood Barbers in Inflation Monica's Barber Shop, her son owns that, and it's really cool to see that passing through. I had no idea until I walked in there. And then Art Centric, also on 38th Avenue that day, and Mestizo Cantina last Thursday, which was, if you haven't been there yet, it's absolutely phenomenal, fantastic place. So with all these businesses opening up, and we have several more coming, if you can find it, you should find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Stites. Thank you all for being here. A great meeting tonight. Congratulations to, I think, all the women in our city. I think we have a city that hopefully nurtures, nurtures and is nurtured by the women in our community. So thank you for making us whole in our community. We want to thank all the folks who were applied for and appointed or not appointed to the boards and commissions. It takes a lot of work to put your application together. We appreciate your interest in the, in serving, you know, in our city. It's a great way to, it's a great way to meet people and do things for your community. So thanks to those folks who stepped up to do that. We appreciate that, and we hope you will continue to come and serve with us. I want to congratulate and really say way to go to Local Works and Paige and the folks that are making the Makerspace come to Wheat Ridge. I think it'll be a great thing. I'm looking forward to making some things myself, so, and more importantly, learning how to do it right. We, Mayor Protam Stites talked about the ribbon cuttings, and I want to thank, we also did another one, and I was really pleased to go to a presentation by the Wheat Ridge Theater Company at 38th and Chase. And we opened them up here the other day, and I went and saw Cyrano de Bergerac last Sunday. Great play, great opportunity, great to have live theater in the round in our community. So they do a great job. They have a lot of, a lot of great plays and musicals coming up. I hope everyone will support the Wheat Ridge Theater Company at 38th and Chase. Good luck to Mestizo Brew Cantina, great, great place to have them there. Just a lot of life coming to our city. Want to thank Maria and her, and her team for the work on the Wadsworth, the Wadsworth Phase One, Phase Two A, Phase Two B, all of that work. It's coming along. It's a tough project, but you've got great, great people out there doing great work, and we really appreciate that. I want to say, you know, I have an opportunity to meet with a lot of the metro mayors. We have a group of 39 mayors in the metro area that I meet with, and we meet on a number of different venues and occasions. And I can't go, but what I'm, I'm asked and sort of are really pleased to be able to say what a great city we've got, what a great, you know, sort of starting at the top with the city council that we have here, you know, putting yourself together and reading your packages and showing up prepared and really providing the best service possible for our community. We've got a great staff and a great leadership team and the people throughout the city that work for us to support what is really a great community and a great group of citizens that we're fortunate to live with. And I want to thank everyone for doing what they can do to make our city the best place in Colorado to live. We have, we maybe have some weather coming in, whether we've got bad weather coming in or not, always try slowly and safely through our community. We love to have you here. We want to make sure that everybody goes home safely at the end of the night, which we hope to do here now. Unless there's any more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. So thank you all much, and we will adjourn.